Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the governing body, August 26. I'll call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Councilman Dobler, who will provide the invocation, stand as you are able, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to welcome Father Anthony Olet, currently Pastor at Christ the King Parish here in Topeka. He has held that position since the 1st of July, but we're actually welcoming him back to Topeka. He was here for about a year at Our Lady of Guadalupe. Father Anthony grew up in Princeton, just outside of Ottawa. He served six years in the U.S. Navy as an electronics technician, really served all over the world. Nineteen years as an ordained Roman Catholic priest, and he's been around northeast Kansas, Wyandotte County, Osage County, as I mentioned, one year here in Topeka. He's glad to be back in Topeka where his father served for four years as an electronics technician at Forbes Field. So help me welcome Father Anthony to the podium.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Good and gracious Father, we bless and we praise you. We thank you for this day. Thank you for this opportunity to gather as brothers and sisters, as citizens of this city. Father, we ask the help of your Holy Spirit as we gather. We ask for wisdom and grace. We ask for peaceful hearts and understanding ears. We ask for the words to articulate our thoughts and our hopes. Blessed this time together, may be fruitful, may it glorify you. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on now to the agenda. Madam Clerk, we've called the roll, please.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Pillar.
Here.
Valdivia Akala.
Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Cal.
Here.
Miller.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Hofer.
Here.
Okay. We have eight present.
Move on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
All right, A is a minute of the regular meeting of August 19, 2025, and there are no applications.
Okay, we've heard the consent agenda is read. There's a motion to approve by Deputy Mayor Cal, seconded by Councilman Banks. And we're ready to vote. Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Okay, we have eight yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, action item number three, please.
A is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler recommending approval of project numbers 2911-2301 and 2911-4901 for the Water Pollution Control Facility Rehabilitation Program Project West Water Treatment Plant Building B renovation in addition as further described in Exhibit A.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Sylvia Davis, our Director of Utilities, and Jason Tryon, Deputy Director of Public Works, to be available to walk us through this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the governing body. We are seeking approval tonight for a project to do a renovation in addition at Building B at the wastewater treatment plant. This would be a joint project between facilities and utilities using the Utilities Facility Program budget. This is a cash-funded item that has been in the CIP previously. What this will do will allow us to stop using Building U, a building that was constructed in 1929 that is no longer serving the needs of the wastewater treatment plant, and to provide a facility which is more in line with their current needs. This would provide offices as well as shop space, break rooms, and locker rooms for the staff that use that facility to maintain our wastewater infrastructure. That'll stand for any questions.
Well, Councilman Duncan, do you have a report on this or something you want to share with us on this particular item? I have it just on my agenda. If not...
Not me. I'm not on the infrastructure.
I understand that. Understand that, but your name's on my list. Councilman Banks.
I think... Thank you, Mayor. I think that when we have an opportunity to address some of the issues that we have with the older facilities that we have in our city, this is an opportunity for us to feel very privileged, the Infrastructure Committee, and work really hard. I think that Director Davis has brought a very viable... very viable building... let me see.
Project.
Project to us. So I think it would be to our advantage to vote approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comment? Councilwoman Hofer.
I was at the infrastructure meeting, and I had the privilege to see some of the pictures of this building, and it's in pretty bad shape. The bathroom is so bad, they won't use that bathroom. They go to another building. The building doesn't have very good temperature control. It's cold when it's cold and it's hot when it's really hot, and I think we need to take good care of our employees. So I'm going to vote for this.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Well, if there are no other comments, I have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz and seconded by Councilwoman Hofer. Ready to vote?
All right, we have eight yes. The motion carries.
Yes.
Oh, we have nine yes.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, Agenda Item B, please. Action.
B is a public hearing to consider comment from the public concerning the governing body's consideration whether to exceed the Topeka Metro Transit Authority's revenue-neutral rate of 3.999 and impose a proposed tax rate of 4.2 mils, and a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert M. Perez to levy a property tax rate on behalf of the Topeka Metro Transit Authority, TMTA, that exceeds the revenue-neutral rate.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Josh McIntosh, our Budget and Finance Division Director, will lead us through this item. I'll also see Bob Nugent, General Manager, Topeka Metropolitan Transit Authority, here to answer any questions.
Josh.
Thanks, City Manager. Good evening, governing body. Like the City Manager said, tonight we'll have two revenue-neutral hearings, one for the Topeka Metro and one for us, which is the next item. First, we wanted to go through some just general information on what our mill levy is and some revenue-neutral rate information. We reviewed this back on July 15th, but we always think it's a good refresher for the governing body and both the public. So Shawnee County both provides the total assessed property valuations for commercial and industrial property. Obviously, they're assessed at different rates with residential property being at 11.5%. The revenue-neutral rate is what we collected last year in terms of property taxes, and then if there's appreciation, the difference between the revenue-neutral rate and our current mill rate would be that increment that we would capture if we kept, theoretically kept, the current mill rate. And then this is a multi-pronged process. Tonight is just a hearing and voting on whether or not we can actually see if we can capture that increment. The full mill levy wouldn't be set until we actually adopt the budget, which will be in mid-September. So tonight just opens, leaves the door open for a possibility. And then in 2024, in our audit for the general fund, 32% of property taxes, or property tax revenue is of the general fund. And then in 2026 budget, 1.5 million is what one mil is. Our current mill rate is 36.956, and the revenue-neutral rate is 35.183. So like I said earlier, if we capture that increment, the city would collect about $2.7 million more in property taxes than they did the previous year. Now, on the metro side, their revenue, or their mill levy rate's 4.2, and their revenue-neutral rate is 3.999, and that's, the difference between those two is about $300,000. And then as an example, just to show what each, if an $150,000 appraised property, $200,000, et cetera, those are the theoretical property tax bills just for the city of Topeka portion. Now, there's other, seven other different taxing entities, but that would give people an idea of when they pay their property tax bill, if we set our current mill rate of 36.956, $150,000 appraised property would pay $637, or $637.59, and then if we kept our revenue-neutral rate, it would be $606.91. And then obviously, it could be anywhere in between based on what the body did, but that just gives an idea. And so what the process is tonight is just, this is open feedback for the public to come in and give their thoughts on the budget, the revenue-neutral rate in general, because it's all kind of co-mingled together. But this is, the first hearing is just for the metro. So with that, that's all I kind of had for, in regards to the mill levy rate in tonight's hearings.
Okay. Well, at this time, I have to open a public hearing and ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak to this matter. Sir, step forward.
May I hand my testimony to each side here?
Yeah.
I have one.
So I don't have your name on my list. Could you?
I was told we didn't have to sign up. Earl McIntosh.
Okay, thank you, sir.
My name is Earl McIntosh, and I'm here this evening to speak in opposition to raising property taxes above the revenue-neutral rate. As many of you know, I'm a candidate for the 7th District City Council seat. One of my primary reasons I am running is to work collaboratively with the city, county, and state officials, and anyone else willing to engage to resolve this issue. One thing is certain: We cannot continue to increase property taxes, including valuation-based assessments. Homeowners, figuratively speaking, are at the end of their rope. Over the past several months, I have personally visited thousands of homes throughout my district. I can confidently report to this council that conditions are deteriorating for homeowners, renters, and businesses alike. The rising cost of living has eroded most residents' savings. Many people cannot afford basic expenses such as car repairs and home maintenance. Individuals on fixed income are being displaced from their homes at an alarming rate. Credit cards, auto loans, and mortgage defaults are reaching historic highs. Our city cannot achieve sustainable economic growth until we bring stability to our residents. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I respectfully urge you to not raise the property tax above the revenue-neutral level. Furthermore, I propose a one-year moratorium on property tax increases. This matter has not been debated with the seriousness and urgency it deserves. We need to bring together decision-makers from the state, the county commission, and the city council to initiate a comprehensive and honest conversation. On the back of the papers I gave you is a chart circulating from kansasopengov.org showing that Topeka residents are now paying double the rate of inflation for property taxes each year. So what that means is the city has taken more than their fair share. While the city collects millions more each year in property tax, the average income in Topeka residents are declining at a significant rate. Finally, I have spoken to thousands of constituents, and one of our top concerns is the city's decision to purchase and renovate a hotel at the cost of over $13 million. Many believe those funds could have been better used to provide property tax relief. My heart is with the people of Topeka, the citizens of Topeka. If elected, I pledge to work tirelessly with other elected officials to reduce our city's debt and to lower the cost of living for our residents. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, for your time and consideration. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir. Again, I ask, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? Sir?
I'm James King. I'm trying to live on two fixed incomes. I'm 70 years old. I can't afford any more taxes. My house payment keeps going up, and everything else keeps going up, and I know everything's going up here, but you people too, but I can't afford it. I'm tired of the good year, and I'm a veteran. I'm a Navy veteran. I'm getting funds from the Social Security disability, and I can't afford it because nobody around wants to raise my budget in incomes. I'm trying to live on fixed incomes, and it ain't working. I tell you that right now.
Again, I ask, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter?
It seems like this is a Jay-Z view type thing. It seems like we do this every year, and you guys don't seem to ever listen. I don't know why we waste our time coming talking to you. I actually applaud you that you were of my 10 vultures, I've got 10 vultures in my pocket, trying to get property tax out of me. I've got a paper in my pocket that, from Washford Rural to the city, municipal, the whole thing, and of you guys at least stayed within inflation. So I want to commend you on that, but it's still too much. We're getting tired of it. Why are you trying to think we are New York and California? We are not New York and California. I know our governor thinks we are, but we're not. We are not New York and California. 20 years ago, I just found out that you guys voted in having a city commissioner, and now I found out there's two deputies, two deputies, that were paying things. You, as mayor, could do these jobs. We don't need a city manager and two deputies. We're not that rich a city. Now, 20 years ago, I guess you guys thought we were, and the people thought we were, but we've developed into people fleeing. We're living on fixed income, just like the other guy, but what are we to do? Every year, we've got this big increase. Washford Rural, I mean, they're just like a hog. They're taken out of our pocket like nothing's raised, but at least you guys are only 2%, but still, that's too much. You don't need to raise it. You can be revenue-neutral. You can stop this up, 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 every year. If we get rid of a bunch of these salaries that are overloading us up the front end, just like the school system, just overloaded with superintendents, we would be able to do something. But no, you don't listen. You don't talk to us. You act like you do, and then people run on it, and I know you've got a mayor candidate in your midst that maybe will be next mayor, but we've got to do something. We can't continue to do the same old, same old. That's, you know what that is? That's the definition of insanity, doing the same old, same old, and thinking it's going to get you a different result. It's not. Now, if our roads were nice, and we had good roads out there, and I'd drive in here, and I'd feel like I was doing a good job and didn't feel like I was in pothole city, I would feel a lot better. But when I drive in here, and I feel like I'm in pothole capital of the United States, and you guys want to take more money, you wanted to take more money, more money, more money, and like he said, there's some other things, you know, you guys have done that I won't bring up, but you know what they are, that you shouldn't have done. So I hope you come out on that with a decent compromise on that silly hotel, but anyway. I don't know what else to say, but I feel like I'm wasting my time when I talk to you guys, and that's getting old. We've been there 14 years, and when I came to Topeka, I asked somebody, "Why do you put up with these roads?"
Sir?
I know now.
Do you need more time?
No, 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 I'm done. I'm done.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Yes, thank you very much for listening.
Sir, can you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, Malcolm Adams.
Thank you.
I live in District 9.
Thank you.
I'm Yerish.
All right. Got it.
Thank you. Okay, on this matter, now ask the governing body if there's any discussion. Oh, so another person, I'm sorry, didn't see you back there.
Lynell Griffith, Topeka, and councilmembers. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I, too, am opposed to rising property taxes, like many people. Last year, when I spoke, I said, you know, it was, my heart was torn out listening to people's stories. It's a hardship for me, but it's a big hardship for some people with the rising property taxes. And I said, you know what, why don't we spend less on the bells and whistles and more on our streets and water mains and those things which only local government can do? And I was told by a council member that there are buckets of revenue, buckets of budgets, if you will, that need to precisely be spent, and I was out of time, but I wanted to say, we are Americans, we can switch up those buckets. We make our own laws, and we can do something about this. So today, my heart is no less anguished with the stories of people struggling and moving out of Shawnee County and Topeka because of the rising property taxes, but I want to just propose some thoughts, some solutions. I'm sure, I'm sure it's tough, so let me give you some ideas. So for one, we can change the buckets. Topeka, since 2020, on average, every year has increased the total revenue collected from property taxes about $2 million. For the county, that's $6 million on average, the increase. So one place to transfer the budget buckets, if you will, of revenue could be from the Greater Topeka Partnership, GoToPica. In 2024, GoToPica got $11 million in sales tax revenue. They did spend nearly $2 million or about 18% on personnel and office expenses. I think that's high. I think we could do better. But nevertheless, Shawnee County and Topeka's population did not grow noticeably. If we shifted more of the GoToPica budget back to the city and county, then those total property taxes would not need to increase. We could capture that 8 million on average that both the county and the city together have been taking since 2020. So I want you to consider that these economic developments from GoToPica, again, they haven't noticeably increased the population, so we need to switch to affordability. Drawing people to live in our community with a better tax environment is economic development. We need to shift gears and grow the tax base with more people living here, not overtaxing those that are here. So let me remind you of some things, not an exhaustive list, but some things that are great about Topeka and can draw people in to boost our population. Our housing costs are, in general, relatively lower here. Now we need to improve the property tax environment. We have fabulous older homes with a lot of character and charm that can be renovated and sold, or lived in, or rented. We can draw in people with renovation skills. Of course, we want to increase industry, but we can also draw in people with mobile jobs, because this is a fabulous place to live because of the housing environment. There's a lot of potential to get more for your money. And, you know, our downtown in Noto, I think they're lovely, but now let's fill those spaces. Think Mass Street in Lawrence, or Aggieville in Manhattan. We need to fill our downtown with people. We did a good job on it. Now let's fill it with people. And Topeka's a college town, we're positioned between K-State and KU, we're just an hour from Kansas City. I used to live in Dallas, and, or Dallas County, and when we drove to Dallas proper for big city things to do, it was an hour drive. That's like in Topeka, driving to Kansas City. We have all that.
Your four minutes are up. Do you want more time?
I would love more time. Thank you so much for asking.
How much more time, ma'am?
Uh, two minutes.
Two minutes. Any opposition? All approve, say aye. Aye. Proceed, please.
Thank you, councilmembers. So GoToPica, let's switch that budget, if we must. If we can't remain revenue-neutral, then let's switch that budget bucket of economic development and shift it towards affordable, an affordable tax environment. We already have relatively affordable home environment, so we can capitalize on Topeka's relatively lower cost of living. Again, we already have a cool downtown. Let's fill it with people, not more empty stores. And young adults right now, they're really, they're thinking maybe I'll never own a home, but Topeka can be that place. I mean, in the early 2000s, we purchased a home for $50,000, and it was a beautiful place to live. We had a lot of sweat equity in it, and I looked at the market just this weekend. There are still homes from $50,000 to $100,000 in Topeka that can be renovated and have tremendous charm. That could be a huge draw for us. So let's improve our roads, our water mains, make Topeka safe and an affordable place to live. Democrats, Republicans, Libertarians, Independents, they all want a better property tax environment, and I hope that you choose to do that tonight. I hope that if need be, and we need to take it to a vote, we use that GoToPica money to stop raising property taxes, and better yet, down the road, let me plant the seed again, for a stable tax, a home-stutter stable tax, where what you purchase it for is what it's valued at for your property taxes until you sell it, and then it's at a new price. And I think what that could do to the older homes that need renovation, we can make our community really, really beautiful. We have an affordable place to live. We have a lot to offer, Topeka, we just need to switch gears just a little bit, and I think we can do it, and I'm asking for your help with that tonight. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? And for the record, sir, could we have your name, please?
My name is Greg Means.
Thank you.
I just want to give a little example. I got my property tax, and I grew up on a farm at Berryton, and the Missouri Pacific Railroad cut part of our property in two, and so we have a piece of property that's landlocked. And I called the treasurer. It was last year, it was appraised at $810. This year, it's appraised at $1,800. That's $990 increase. Prior year assessment was $243, now it's $540. I called the appraiser, "Well, we can't do anything because the people in the upper state, they can't." They said, "This is what it's got to be." Something's, I agree with you, somebody's got to put a stop to this. I don't know why our leaders... I don't know why our leaders are not leaders in listening. I want to end on a positive note. I want to praise Tina at the appraiser's office. I protested my taxes. I used to be in real estate, so I'm not afraid to go before a committee like this. Most people aren't. They just have to do whatever you guys say. But I protested, I called Tina. She is a wonderful worker. She listened to me, and I got a piece of property that was zoned commercial, which didn't have any sewer, didn't have any water, and I got it zoned residential. So I want to praise Tina at the appraiser's office. Thank you for the time that you allowed me to speak.
Thank you, sir. Okay, again, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Step forward, And for the record, sir, would you identify yourself?
My name's Tim Scott. David Banks is my councilman, and I'm happy that he's here and involved in what's going on in our city. You know, the reason this place isn't packed out, because everybody's determined, you can't fight City Hall. Oops, didn't know this rolled, sorry. That's why this place isn't packed out right now. I've talked to hundreds of people, not thousands like this gentleman has, but hundreds of people, and they're all upset about this. This is my proposed new property taxes. You know how much I pay in property taxes? Over $4,000. That's not including my vehicles. You're killing people. You're causing people to have to move out of their homes. You're keeping people in apartments, and they're being gouged by the apartments. Everybody here knows this is true. Everybody here knows this is true. And there's nothing, it seems like there's nothing we can do about it. This is the first time you've ever seen me here, because I've had enough. And the people I've talked to have had enough. And I know that they're not going to stand up to you because they think that there's nothing that they can do. This has got to stop. This has got to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other persons who would like to speak to this matter? Yes, ma'am. Step forward, please. Would you identify yourself, please?
My name is Sarah Canatzer.
Thank you.
I live at 900 North Madison in North Topeka. I've lived over there in that neighborhood for about 65 years, and I've really seen some changes. About half the houses in my neighborhood are gone from fire or demolition, and the ones that have burned have been burned by the homeless staying in them. In the winter, trash is in abundance because of the rescue mission. They eat their meals. They walk down the street. They throw their styrofoam and the food that's left on the street instead of walking 20 feet to a trash can and throwing it in. The Topeka Police Department, Topeka's crime is, per capita, way over the national crime levels, especially violent crimes. Our police department is 32 officers short. There's a drug house in my neighborhood that I've called and tried to talk to narcotics detectives about. They've taken people out of there on stretchers with their faces covered up. I was told that there's only two narcotics detectives in our city at this time, and they're both not doing narcotics investigations. They're being used for violent crime, to solve violent crimes, which they're not solving. They've got me taking pictures of the house. I've got hundreds of pictures of tag numbers of vehicles parking out front, people going inside, getting their drugs, and coming back out with them. And they said, as soon as they get back into narcotics enforcement, they'll get a hold of me. And I've been spotted taking pictures probably about a dozen times, so I'm waiting for some retaliation over that, which the police department, there's really no help over in North Topeka. I mean, I've had situations where I've had people dumping trash out of a pickup truck, dumping their trash cans back along the railroad tracks. I've called the police, and I've been told that there's really nothing they can do, because if the people can't afford their trash bill, how are they going to afford the fine? It's like, that's kind of a dumb way to look at it, I think.
Ma'am?
Yes.
I don't mean to interrupt you.
Sure.
This is comment on the revenue-neutral rate.
I understand that.
Okay.
So my point is, what am I going to get for higher taxes?
Okay.
When my budget gets tight at home, I cut cable TV, I do less, I turn the thermostat down. I think the city needs to do the same thing. Let's turn the thermostat down a little bit. Let's cut some salaries maybe a little bit lower. We can still live off of it, but I'm sure you'd still be making more than a lot of the people out here. I'm on a fixed income. I don't, I've got homeless people. I've been assaulted, and I've done assaulting. I've blown dogs in half with my shotgun because they've attacked my son, they've attacked me, and they're the homeless people's dogs. Now, the city's done a really good job of moving the homeless people down the river, but they've done nothing for the homeless population. It's, what is the homeless population, about 500 in the city of Topeka right now? I mean, we need to do something. We need to cut some money in places and maybe hire more policemen and work on crime. I mean, I've got stats here. I know I don't have time to go over all this, but, you know, our violent crime is 812 violent crimes per 100,000 people. Homelessness, just everything is ridiculous. And I've had my house broken into. I've had two Harley-Davidson motorcycles stolen from me. The police said I'd never see them again. I caught the people and the motorcycles one time. I lost the other bike. My house has been broken into. Over a dozen firearms have been stolen. All of my tools have been stolen. And they told me there was nothing could be done there either. So if nothing can be done, let me do it. Let me take care of it. The city just doesn't seem to be functioning properly, at least over where I'm at. I don't know about these other people's neighborhoods, but it's terrible over there. And as far as our taxes, as far as our, I'd like more time.
Okay, how much time would you like?
Just a couple more minutes.
Okay. Any objection? Two minutes?
As far as our, as far as our taxes go, when I bought my house 30 years ago, I had several houses, and that's the one I've got left now, and I'm living in it, because it was in my neighborhood. I paid $18,000 for it, and now you've appraised it at like $60,000 something. Tax me on the $18,000, and I'd be happy, especially for the services I'm getting, the holes in the streets, the police not being able to do anything, you know? So I guess that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Okay, move on to the governing body, who might want to have any discussion about this issue that we have here now, sir. Councilman Duncan?
I just want to clarify, this first vote is relative to only the TMTA. Then we will take the vote on R rate, correct? That's where we're at? Which is fine. Comments are all still valid. I just want to make sure I'm voting where I need to vote as we vote.
Yes, you do have to hold two separate hearings.
Yes, perfect. Just want to make sure I'm doing what I need to do. Thank you.
Any other further discussion? Councilwoman Hiller?
I'll step out here, I guess. I've been on the council for a while, and this is a challenge every year. It used to be that we got asked about whether we wanted to change our mill levy. And at least the mill levy is keeping the pace with inflation. This change to revenue-neutral, I think everybody knows, is new. So it's saying, are you going to step back to the cash level that you had the year before? Regarding Metro Transit, which is the bus company, and that's who we're talking about today, they've worked really hard to keep their, their mill levy the same for many, many years, and have worked really hard to try and develop the best possible services within that. As the mayor said, the final decision on exactly what their budget will be and exactly what their mill levy will be, will be when they vote on their budget itself. This vote today is just to cap it and say what, what the most could be. I will support keeping their mill levy the same as they've requested. Thank you.
Councilman Banks?
As we sit and listen to our constituents talk about what I would say is a dire position for them, myself, I've only been on this council for this vote, for this revenue rate that are, that we're asking about. And on principle, I cannot support it. As I look at people suffering, being taxed out of their homes, I mean, we're all being taxed. But at some point, we kind of let our constituents know that we feel their pain. It'd just be really difficult to say I would support an increase in our revenue-neutral rates. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We, as a city, are having the same issues that our presidents are having. We're having an increase in costs to just do the very basics. We, majority of us up here are dealing with issues from 10, 15 years ago, of things being kicked down the road, as the roads have been mentioned several times, that we're trying to get onto things. I agree with the, getting back to basics. I think one thing we need to look at is pausing complete streets down. Just work on the streets and not work on street projects, you know? Do the street, do utilities, get rid of, get rid of all the extras for right now. Let's get our roads back to where they need to be.
Yeah.
We have been trying to work as much as we can within what we have. It's been a big hit on everyone, and I've said for, for several years, that when it comes up to our turn for this meeting, sometimes we might have to take a bite out of the apple. Everyone else has. Everybody's set in record profits every year, and they keep on getting more and more. I'm not a fan of utilities being a publicly traded company where it can be, it's required to turn a profit. And the county keeps on raising the mill levy. Everyone else keeps and, at a certain point, we're going to have to do something. I know we've done the cuts already. We're trying to look at other ways to do things. I know we brought some certain jobs in-house, like what it comes to the, our public relation utilities. But right there, there's extra costs that we've incurred on what we have to pay for those items that we are using. And we need to be able to, try to be able to do what we need to do without being bare bones. Because if we're bare bones at the city, when everyone else is taking all they can, it makes us hurt even more as a city and be able to do less for our citizens. I'm not talking about increasing the mill levy. I'm just talking about, we need to be able to do what we can do and be able to, we understand that it's rough on everyone. But a lot of this, I think, needs to be directed at other places and go after the ones that every year keep on going, mill levy higher, keep on wanting to do everything. As a city, I think it's been 12, 13 years we haven't increased the mill levy. And we're trying to do our best on what we have in front of us. And it's one of those things that I think we need to have that little extra cushion to be able to do a little bit more, because, you know, as God mentioned, get more police officers. That costs a good amount of money. You know, cut this position. Well, now, two or three people at the door of that one position, and there are, a lot of our employees stretched thin in a lot of departments. So if we want our city to run like we want it to run, we need to have a little flexibility. I know that's not a popular opinion, but that's, that's, it's kind of like where we get, why aren't we fixing the roads? But then we get yelled at for the roads being closed to be fixed. And it's one of those things, we can't win sometimes up here, no matter what we do. And we're trying to do our best. And like I said, a lot of the stuff that we're trying to make up from is 10, 15, 20 years ago, that has been deferred maintenance. And that's one of the biggest phrases I hate in the world, and I know it's been brought up again lately because of our budget issues. And to me, all it means is it's going to cost more later. And what we can fix now at a cheaper cost is a lot better than trying to fix it five years from now. And so that little bit extra wiggle room allows us to fix a little bit more now than wait five years and pay maybe double, triple the cost of what it might cost to do in five years from now, or 10 years from now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Duncan?
Well, as I say, Mayor, I have some comments, but I'm going to go ahead and make the motion on this, the TMTA one, so we can get to ours, and then I can make my comments then. I'm just going to, I'm going to go ahead and move the TMTA one.
So your motion is to approve?
Yes.
And seconded by Councilman Dobler. We're ready, Madam Clerk, to vote.
And this requires a voice vote, so I will start with Mayor Padilla. Your vote on the side?
No.
And start, there we go. All right. Okay, Councilmember Hiller?
Yes.
Ortiz?
No.
Banks?
Topeka does have that. It's called a new database, that they've now joined mass with the whole dollar.
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
I'm going to vote yes on this one.
And Hofer? All right, the motion failed. We have five yes, with councilmembers Ortiz, Banks, Miller, and Mayor Padilla voting no.
So on this one, we're closed for this public hearing. Are the, this public hearing
All right, the next item is C, is a public hearing to consider comment for the public concerning the governing body's consideration of adopting a budget for 2026 that exceeds the revenue-neutral rate, which is 35.183, and a resolution introduced by City Manager Robert Perez to levy a property tax rate that exceeds the city of Topeka's revenue-neutral rate.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. I think Josh has provided most of his comments, mayor and governing body, and so I'll open up to any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Josh before I open the public hearing? Okay, seen any immediately. Again, at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone present who would like to speak to this matter. Is, yes, ma'am?
If the rich get something like this in the mail, if the rich, if the rich get something like this in the mail, tax increases, because, because...
Yeah.
I don't know why y'all raising these damn taxes when I can afford to pay them. My house payment goes up all the time. I don't need my house evaluation to go up. I need a house payment to go down. And that's what I need, to live. I'm on two fixed incomes. My fixed incomes don't increase unless y'all go and vote again.
Thank you. I ask again, is there someone else to speak on this matter? Ma'am? Thank you again, Lanell Griffith. And I understand that most of our comments were about this topic earlier, too. So just addressing that. And Councilman Kel, I just wanted to say again, I did, I hear you're, you know, get blamed if you do, blamed if you don't. I did propose a solution, even though it might require a public vote, and that is Again, City of Topeka's annual increase of about $2 million, plus the county's annual increase of about $6 million, we're talking $8 million. We can get it done without raising property taxes. And so I just, again, want to reiterate that idea, just to say, we can change the buckets, we can do something. I hear you pain, I know we need our safety, we need our police and fire, we need our roads, we need our water. I get it. But we can cut back on some of the extras. We have enough, now let's fill the space, and it can be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak to this matter?
Mel Adams, we live all around nine and what have you, all around Irish. And basically, I guess, like the rest of them, we were talking ahead of time on the metro thing. I know you ride the metro bus, I don't care nothing about the metro bus, because I don't ride it, but I hope that the people that do, we did some good for them. But anything that I said before was actually talking about our property tax. That's what I was talking about. And so I guess we spoke out of turn, so that's the way it goes sometimes. So thank you for listening. I really appreciate your comments. You really had some good comments there, I appreciated that. And like I say, you guys were 2%, you were leased within inflation, so I again commend you for that. On the property tax, where everybody else, the library went down, thank goodness, that was the only one that went down. They went down, I couldn't believe it, but they did. And then there was another one that was 2%, but you guys were only at 2% besides everybody else's over above inflation. So those are the hearings that is going to be the most effective or we're going to waste our time. So I don't know what else to say except what I've already said. You know how I feel, so we appreciate you guys and appreciate what you're doing and appreciate your comments and you that have commented and what have you. And so remember, we don't want more taxes. That's all you need to remember.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Anybody on the governing body? Councilman Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, I do have some comments on this one. These are in no particular order, just going to go through some numbers and some of my frustrations as a general rule with property taxes in our state and as we sit here and have to deal with this issue now. Just so everyone's clear, if we stayed revenue neutral, that's over $2 million of additional cuts we'll have to make to the budget, fine. You know, my frustration at times becomes, the city is 25% of your property tax bill. There are seven other taxing entities if you live in Shawnee County. Now, let's be clear, that does not mean we don't have a role to play, that doesn't mean we don't have some impact, but it is frustrating at times when there's only a few of us who take a look at our budgets harder, make these tough decisions, and make the smaller sliver while the majority sort of continue to go and make a bulk of that, of that percentage, which is 75%. If you live in Shawnee County, over the last five years, your overall mill levy is lower than it was five years ago, but your taxes go up. And in my day job with the League of Kansas Municipalities, where I work with all the cities of Kansas, that has been a growing frustration with us, because there is clearly a disconnect between this idea where local governments have a mill levy and the property tax valuation system itself. And they are at odds. And there have got to be changes made at the state level to get those more in sync. And that is something that for three years now, I continue to advocate for, not just in that job, but serving the citizens of Topeka at the legislature. And each year, we get to the point where they can't make any decisions up there, and so the squeeze then gets put on us as local governments, which means then it becomes a squeeze on you as the citizens of our community. They have got to make those fixes. So I encourage everyone to please continue to have a conversation with your legislators about doing something this next legislative session, to sync those up so that we don't have this disconnect, so that we aren't having this circular conversation, because it's frustrating for all of us. That does not mean, however, that we, again, don't have a role to play as local governments, because we are a piece of that. And I tonight am willing to play that role and try to draw that line, but I continue to want to advocate that that is a change that also has got to happen. We, as a city, have a role to play in making that happen, you as citizens do, and the other taxing entities need to participate in that conversation with the legislature to make those changes happen. We have taken steps into Topeka to try to address that. We've not raised our mill levy in 14 years. We've lowered it. Your city mill levy is lower today than it was I got on this, when I got on this council five and a half years ago, and I'm happy that we've continued to fight for that. I have voted twice before to stay revenue neutral on this body. I almost voted a third time, but that year, two years ago, we were only half a mill above the revenue neutral rate, and that was the year that I proposed, and this council graciously adopted our now tax rebate program. So if you're 65 and older and low income or 100% disabled veteran, we will now rebate back your city property tax. I'm proud of that, because I know it's made a difference for some people, and I've continued to ask our other taxing entities to take a look at a program like that, to help do the same thing for other taxing agencies. And so those are some steps that we've taken. So those are my frustrations. I'm going to sit here tonight and fight on behalf of the citizens that I've continued to do, but it's a very complex system, and we have a role, but I always like to remind people during this time that we've also got to keep chipping away at those other areas, too, so that we can, it's a very, it's a very unit that is very connected together, and one of us making a change has an impact on the others, but we never talk. The legislature's doing their part, the local governments are doing their part, we got to sync those up. So, thank you, Mayor.
Further comment from the governing body?
Just a comment, Mayor.
Councilman Banks?
Just a comment to Councilman Duncan for the information that he just passed on to us. I think that it's not only important for us, but it is very important for our citizens to know some of those facts that may slip past us, or for some of us just don't have the ability or to get that information. So thank you, Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Councilwoman Hofer?
One thing that has not been said, and I want to make sure all of you understand it, just because we approve, or dis, well, if we approve the current mill rate, does not mean that we might not lower it after we get through the budgets. We have to see what, I want to give us the wiggle room to be able to get to the correct budget. And if we would go to revenue neutral, it's more of a sale, and we've got a, a fire sale, and we've got to throw a lot of things out. I want the ability to look at every line and figure out what really needs to be trimmed, what we really have to get. And we're still in the middle of budget hearings. We're still listening to every department to see what they need, what they're doing, where their employee count stands, what their goals are. So I'm going to vote to exceed the revenue neutral rate, so it gives us a chance to figure out what's best. It doesn't mean I won't vote to lower it later, it just means right now, I want the wiggle room to do what's best.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank people that came, particularly, I agree, I mean, I've been on the council for a while. We've raised taxes only once, and we reduced them to mills, what, two years ago, three? Maybe we shouldn't have. That would have helped us be in a better position today, but that's what we did, and that's where we are. We've worked hard every year to balance providing what people want in a timely manner, as well as managing that budget. I think people know that I've been somebody who's worked really hard on trimming that budget, and that's underway as far as I'm concerned today as well, and this, this round. I really appreciate the suggestions that come from, from folks, and Lanell, for instance, Ms. Griffith, whatever I should say, those thoughts about our neighborhoods is something that's been really strongly on my mind, and, and it's thinking about things that aren't necessarily dollar for dollar, but looking at what we can do. Some of the challenges that we've faced before as a council are to try and attract people and businesses, and with that, we've foregone some future property taxes. And we just recently got some information from our finance staff about how much that's adding up to. That's something I want to look at further as we, as we talk. We're new at this economic development stuff in many ways. But those thoughts and observations, and particularly suggestions about what we can do, what we are looking at is, city manager and staff have kind of moved some money around to try and get by, but with the inflation that we've had, wanting to pay our people well, wanting to make sure that the services are provided, which are top of the line to me, we don't have enough to do it. So we need to make cuts this year to ease that, to get forward. But I say cuts in the budget, we've got some big, big challenges here at the city just to make it balance and to keep those services all moving. So just so you know, hopefully people have watched some of those other discussions we've had already. It's a challenge. Again, good ideas, welcome. We've got about two or three weeks before we finish. Those of us that are wanting to work on how we can trim are working on that right now. So specific ideas are really still very welcome. Thank you.
Councilman Miller?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Please excuse my tardiness. I was attending the Rock reentry simulation, where they take you through a simulation of being a federal prison inmate and then having reentry into.
Can you hear me?
My mic is on. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. What I was saying was, I, excuse my lateness, because I was at the Rock reentry over Stormont Vale. It is simulation of trying to figure out how to live when you come out of federal prison, whether it be a visit was in 15 years or four years, whatever the case may be. And every 15 minutes, they would take you through a week, every 15 minutes was a week. And you had to make really tough choices when you had no other options. What I learned in that and confirmed some of the things I know is that, A, when you make mistakes in life, you sometimes have to pay some pretty big prices for it, okay? But one of the things I do know is sometimes people get lost up in stuff when it's not their choice, but a lot of that is. They made a choice early, and then they have to deal with it. I was listening to this meeting while I was doing that simulation, as I'm trying to figure out how I make $250 a month work. And I'm, I'm, I'm lis, it doesn't work. And I'm hearing from individuals talking about how I've, and throughout the time, there's certain individuals will come up, and they will talk about how I had to buy this house, and we went bigger, 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 and my property taxes went up. I mean, look, I'm not, I'm not going to tell somebody that they shouldn't get bigger houses. If that's what they want to do, great. I think you should do that. But one thing I know, and two things for certain, is that I'm not going to sit here and complain about a situation that I put myself in. Not every single time is a situation to where you have a choice, but some people do have Now, as I got here, I get out of there because I'm listening to stuff on here, so I leave there early, and I'm headed this way, and I go by Topeka High, and I see a gentleman with his pants all the way down to his mid-thigh, leaning into the trash can in the front of Topeka High, trying to find some food. And we have in this conversation tonight about some choices that we have to make. That budget is not easy for us to make. That decision for the budget is not easy. So then when we go through these conversations and have these thoughts from everyone, we've tried to take everything in. But we cannot only look at, well, we just got to get lower. Everything else in the world is going higher, everything else, but we, it's City of Topeka government, you guys are the problem, and just like Duncan just explained, I heard exactly what he said. We are a portion of your taxes, a portion. We're trying to do the best we can with what we have, and you know what the majority of our money goes to. We put the dollar up just some, some time ago about where all the money goes for that dollar. We know where it's at, but I, for one, am not trying to not have the police come to my house when I need them. If my house is burning down, I don't want them to be like, ah, well, no, they couldn't afford their property taxes, or they didn't want to pay them, so they don't come to the house. There's a whole lot to this, and I understand that I'm going on a tangent, I just, it was extremely frustrating listening to some of that and things that we've heard in the, in the past, when these people go through these situations, we have to think about everyone. I am incredibly sympathetic to everybody's situation. I, too, don't want my property taxes going up, but I also know that I can make a choice to change that. Thank you, Mayor.
Before I close the public hearing, would you, like I said, yeah, I'm making my turn and a comment. Thank you, City Attorney. You know, I appreciate the comments that were made this evening. Everybody comes to this council meeting with probably maybe a preset notion about what they're going to say and how they're going to address this council. I have to say that, for the most part, I think people really want to try that place where we can get along and understand each other about what our responsibilities are and what our limitations are. We all have them in our lives. I think it needs to be respectful all, all along the way, because we do listen, believe me. Between these Tuesday night meetings, there are plenty of conversations that go on. They're not secret, like some people would like to think, that we're making deals behind closed doors. That doesn't happen. I've lived in the city all my life, and I've been familiar with many council members. They're serious about their job. They don't take this lightly. And so any comments that might make it sound like we don't listen are inaccurate. We hear every word that you say, and we really want to continue to hear your suggestions so that we get to a point where we can make the best decision possible for us. We are a part of a system that isn't perfect, but we try to do our part as best we can. So if I can ask if there are any further comments to this matter from the governing body? If there is none, I am at the point.
Where their, a motion would be appropriate if there is a motion?
Before I close the meeting?
Correct.
Right. Okay, so is there a motion from the body? There's a motion from Deputy Mayor Brett Kell to approve. A second by Councilman Miller. Ready to vote, please.
And again, this one will have to be on the roll call vote. Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Ortiz? Banks?
No.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
No.
And Hofer?
Yes.
Okay, we have seven yes, with Councilmembers Banks and Duncan voting no, the motion carries.
Okay. Thank you for the exchange and for your votes.
You may now close the hearing.
I am now going to close the public hearing. Thank you, City Attorney. Keep me out of trouble. All right. Madam Clerk, we move now to non-action items. Will you read, please?
As discussion related to the City of Topeka 2026 operating budget.
Okay, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Josh McInarney and various city department heads will lead us through this next item.
Josh?
Thanks, City Manager. Good evening, governing body. So tonight, we're going to be reviewing some of the departments that we haven't reviewed thus far, the city manager's office, HR department, legal department, and then IT, and then the Office of Inclusive Communities, but. Office of Inclusive Communities. But kicking things off with the city manager's office, one thing to note, that's devised of the communications division, which is Dan's division and Brenda's division, the city clerk's office, and then also obviously the city manager's office. In total, there's 14 FTEs within that little portfolio. And then just the key things to know for 2026 is that we did freeze two positions in the emergency management coordinator position and the CFO position, and then we did eliminate one communications and production manager position. And then this is a non-personnel cost, but we're... Our lobbyist contract, Mr. Damren, he is not going to be our legislative lobbyist next year, and so we're going to put that out for bid. And we think that's going to cost around a total of $75,000, but that's just a rough estimate. But that's something that we want to keep the governing body in the loop on, since that's something we do every year and we've had a longstanding contract with them in the past. Not really much else to add to this division. The, yeah, this division personnel cost is about 90%. Just that's how just general administrative departments are. But just some accomplishments, you'll hear being here later tonight about the Office of Inclusive Communities. There's behind-the-seat seal videos that are on our website. And then some just kind of goals for 2026 is streamline customer service experience, improve efforts towards ignorance and provision of government services and processes, and then always improve citizens' responsiveness to our customer service. So with that being said, we open up for questions in regards to this division, if there are any.
Any questions for Josh from the governing body? Seeing none? Thank you, Josh.
And next, I guess I'm going to turn it over to Amanda to discuss the legal department.
Thank you so much, Josh. So thank you so much today, governing body, for allowing me today to present on the legal department's budget for next year. I appreciate you giving me this opportunity one last time to talk about what an amazing job the staff does in the legal department and how you have such a dedicated team of professionals that work for you day in and day out. And so I will miss them very much. So I'm going to present on my budget one last time. So today, just as an overview reminder, your legal department is essentially your in-house counsel for a large-scale corporation. If you think about the fact that our city is a corporation of $300 million with seven unions and over 1,000 employees, you can imagine how much legal work might actually be done when you have that scale of an operation. We do the vast majority of that in-house with a dedicated team of people that don't just do all of your corporation work. We also prosecute all of your municipal offenses, which are all the misdemeanors inside city limits. So there are three divisions that cover all of that. You have your general government, your civil litigation, and then our prosecution division. So over the last year, we have had multiple accomplishments. We've negotiated numerous economic development deals. In the last two years, the City of Topeka has been booming in economic development deals. Previously, we used to contract those out. We took those back in-house in order to help save the developers, taxpayers, everyone that benefits from these, especially RHAD programs, for instance, housing developments benefiting by keeping those deals in-house. So we have been doing numerous economic development deals. We have also spent quite a bit of time at the Capitol negotiating legislation on your behalf, things that the public doesn't always see. But for instance, the banking bill last year would have cost the City of Topeka $1.5 million estimated loss of income on our interest rates. I mean, that's over a mill of property taxes right there alone. Additionally, we've worked hard to do training. Every attorney in the office has a goal by the end of the year to put together one virtual training that can live in various departments on need, such as zoning inspectors, our chief of prosecution, teaching you how to look for the evidence you need to successfully prosecute a zoning case, for instance. When you have that neighborhood house, how do you get the neighbors to give you helpful evidence that can actually be successful in court? Or if you are a new manager, how do you review a union contract? Those kind of trainings that help decrease your overall liability and risk. Also additionally, a massive overhaul this year was working collaboratively with human resources to review our insurance coverage issues. We put that out for an RFP, as well as initiated to make sure that all of our coverage was appropriate and reviewed our workers' comp and risk claims. That was a significant undertaking with human resources, but it was necessary to help make sure that the city has the right balance of coverage of our self-insured and insurance goals. For fiscal year 2026, the goal is to increase those formalized trainings. We came up as a department with an idea of having a lunch and learn series where a lawyer, you know, you go and you meet for an hour over lunch and you learn about some topic that you need to know. Hopefully, it increases interest in those upcoming trends in local government law, but it also really helps decrease your liability if it's about something interesting for an hour that you need to know about. Also additionally, continuing to work on our legislative issues, working in prosecution, we received a grant from the governor's office to roll out our domestic violence prosecution statewide as a model for how to prosecute with a victim-centered approach. So those are very cool opportunities that the legal department will continue to use. Our staffing has been consistent over the last couple of years. General government, we have four attorneys, one and a half support staff. Like I said, handle all contract review, that's over about 600 plus a year. Union negotiations, general legal questions, trainings. They also teach at the police academy, ordinance draft, do all of the open records response, handle all of your various committees, and do the legislative work. Our civil litigation division, we have two attorneys and one and a half support staff. At any given time, your in-house attorneys are balancing 15 to 25 cases in-house. This is a wide range of issues, from constitutional law to union negotiation contracts, union grievances, contract disputes. If you buy a bad hot box, they're the ones that litigate on behalf of the taxpayers to get their money back. So those stay very busy. And then in criminal prosecution, we have four attorneys and five support staff. Over the last couple of years, we appreciate your support as we've increased that support staff to be able to have a victim witness coordinator that is paid for out of grant funds on staff, as well as allowing us the staff that we need to get in compliance with all the property maintenance code cases, those things, for instance, doubling as well as taking on all domestic violence prosecution. We do not have any increasing staffing requests this year. We are stable and continue to be stable and continue to do that work with the amount that we are given. We do not have any kind of budgetary enhancements that we are requesting. It is a stable budget from last year, and we appreciate your continued support with all that we do.
Thank you, Amanda. Any questions for City Attorney? Observations? Thank you. Josh?
Next, we're going to be going over Human Resources Department.
I told Sean she did not get out of her last one, so she had to be at the table tonight. Good evening, governing body. Thank you for allowing us to present tonight on the Human Resources budget. The Human Resources Department, along with legal and finance, is one of your supportive departments to the city. We work really every day doing what we can to support other departments through recruitment, compensation, rate benefits, labor relations, our risk management, our wellness, all of that with a grand total of 14 FTEs. So it's a lot of work in your supportive departments, but I feel like they work hard every day to do that well and to the best of their ability. Some of the department's accomplishments for 2025 are, I'm happy to report, that we are right on track with all of our HRM model phases of the Tyler project. That has been a heavy lift, oftentimes with several days a week, all-day meetings that staff sit in on top of, stand on top of their daily responsibilities. So we are looking to go live in the spring of 2026 with our module. We have also, as Amanda already talked about, finalized RFP for insurance for our citywide portfolio, worked a lot with legal to get that done, and are starting the renewal process of that at the same time as doing all of our healthcare package, which we've worked with finance collaboratively on that as well. Our recruiting team launched a hiring training for our hiring managers, walking them through what questions can you ask, what does that process look like, how to do that part better. So we're going to be moving that to other departments now that we've done our pilot program. I'm happy to report, we have hired two full-time engineers and are in the process of our second round of interviews for our third, which would bring us to only having one more of those vacancies. That's been a big lift for us this year, so we are making good progress on that. We've welcomed 11 interns and externs in our year two of that internship program. This has helped a lot with that engineer gap. They've made a lot of progress. People really look to that program. I mean, it helps us hire people on long-term with the city after they complete it. We've also partnered with legal to sponsor two H1B visa employees. We've achieved 100% CDL pass rate with 22 employees completing that. We have updated job descriptions within the department in new format that we've piloted that we'll be rolling out to the city as a whole. And we are progressing towards full personnel manual restructure and splitting that up more to an admin manual and then a personnel manual. For 2026, we are looking to fully complete and implement our phase of the Tyler project. Like I said, hope to go live with that in the spring. We are looking to work collaboratively across departments to develop a management training program across the board, just, again, really building on those leadership skills and people of management. We are working in collaboration with departments to review and update position descriptions citywide and the new format, making sure that they are accurately reflecting what people actually do. So then when we recruit, we're recruiting for the right people. And then developing a better system for how we track that, so they are being reviewed on a routine basis and then kept up to date.
So with that, Josh, are you going to touch on the second part?
Yeah, I got it. So it was mentioned that we have different buckets and there's different money at City. Locally, we refer to those as funds, and we wanted to talk about some of those other funds tonight, because HR deals with some of them, but we thought it was a good segue into this. So one, we have a retirement reserve fund, so we have a chart with inflows and outflows. So how does money go into the fund and what do we spend it on? So our retirement reserve fund, typically we charge it... We used, and we're not doing so in this budget cycle, but we charge a 2.5% surcharge on employees' base costs. And what that use, that was then transferred to a fund to then pay out when we had large police or fire retirements, that fund could absorb those large payouts towards the end of the year, because when 30 people retire once, accrued sick leave, accrued vacation, those are hefty chunks of change that we didn't want to absorb in the general fund. That's been a pretty standard practice for the last 20 years. Then we have our property and vehicle insurance fund, so that's charged about across several funds across the city, about 65 to 70%, I can't remember off the top of my head, is from the general fund, and then that's transferred to this fund to pay out any large claims, et cetera. Our work comp fund, again, that's a surcharge to employees' baseline cost. That's an expense in various funds wherever employees are paid out of, and then it goes into one fund, our workers' comp fund, to pay out those claims. And then, we've talked a little about this before, but our group health insurance fund, currently, on average, we're about an 85-15 city, meaning the employer pays in... If it's $100, the employer pays in $85 and the employee pays in $15. And that, so everyone pays in, and then on the back end, that's used to pay our annual claim payments to Blue Cross and Blue Shield, or, sorry, weekly claim payments. And then two other ones, our risk reserve fund, back in 20, early 2000s, but in 2016, we haven't put any money in this fund, and that was just reimbursement for uninsured city losses. What we're proposing for in this budget is transferring that roughly $450,000 fund balance into the group health insurance fund, because claims are fastly outpacing revenues. So we hope to do some transfers into the health insurance fund to stabilize that fund going forward. That way, we don't have to raise expenses as much in that fund, because if we raise the premium of any hire, that's essentially raising expenses on ourselves, because if we raise it, we're still paying a portion with that 85%. And then finally, we do a 1% surcharge on employee baseline cost for the unemployment fund. That accounts for unemployment payments to the state. But we thought it'd be a good idea to review those other buckets to give an idea where money's going. Now, I will reiterate, for retirement reserve, workers' comp, and unemployment fund, we're not applying those surcharges this year to the budget, just because there's built-up fund balance, and that's a way to reduce the top-line expenses that we proposed thus far in the 2026 budget. So with that, that kind of concludes the HR portion, some of those other fund portions, but I thought it was important to highlight that.
Any questions for Josh? Alicia? Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next, we'll have the Office of Inclusive Communities, Monique Glaude, director, can come up and speak on that.
Greetings, Mayor, governing body, city manager. The Office of Inclusive Communities works to strengthen community connections by supporting programs and initiatives that encourage understanding, belonging, and inclusive practices across the community. The Office supports community events, outreach initiatives, educational workshops, and partnerships with local organizations to ensure all neighbors feel seen, heard, and valued. In addition, OIC develops resources and programs that build trust and collaboration throughout the community. The department consists of five FTEs. At this time, I'm pleased to present our 2025 accomplishments. In collaboration with communications, we offered City of Topeka Spanish language training for our employees. It was a success for the 10 participating employees, with enthusiastic feedback and strong interest in future sessions. SMS texting service implementation. The pilot program will inform at least 1,000 of our neighbors with instant updates, alerts, and announcements, fostering transparency and engagement. The service will be implemented in conjunction with the launch of the new website. National Night Out, we look forward to sharing full event details during next week's presentation and the success of the events. The American with Disabilities Act's programming and web rule assessment, we are currently in the negotiation phase, aiming to secure the agreement and initiate the assessment process before the end of the year. And finally, we hired a community navigator. The navigator will connect our neighbors to local resources and services while building relationships to better understand and support community needs. In addition, he will collaborate very closely with property maintenance to explore programming that supports neighbors in addressing housing violations. A couple of additional accomplishments I'd like to include and highlight. We had a community resource fair in June. We hosted the fair, which was a resounding success, attracting over 100 participants and fostering meaningful connections between neighbors and 28 local resources. We also had a back-to-school supply initiative. The initiative was at a tremendous success, with dynamic partnerships with Walmart and Grace Med, resulting in the distribution of 499 backpacks to our low- to moderate-income students in need. ARP survey targeted for our 55 and over neighbors. As of today, we have 329 surveys that have been completed with the goal of reaching 500 before the deadline of October 31st. This effort is part of the Age Friendly City Initiative. The Americans with Disabilities Act Council and our Human Relations Commission help strategic planning sessions to guide future priorities and strengthen community impact. We have a couple of additional goals I'd like to touch base on that are forecasted to be met before the end of the year. And we are actively collaborative... We are actively collaborating with our new grant manager to identify promising funding opportunities for both our department and our community partners. And in partnership with City Communications, we will host social media one-on-one sessions for neighborhood leaders and community partners. The sessions will provide strategies and effectively expand outreach and increase engagement. OIC 2026 budget encompasses bold steps forward in amplifying community voices and investing in tomorrow's inclusive leaders. And I'll touch base on a couple of our goals. We are looking forward to launching a transformational youth leadership summit. We're looking forward to strengthening internal collaboration for greater community impact by fostering deeper cross-departmental alignment to streamline efforts, share resources, and deliver unified, community-centered programming that reflects the diverse needs of all of our residents. National Night Out 2026 coordination, which we'll touch base on next week during the presentation. And finally, we're looking forward to building some bold impactful community partnerships. And we plan to deepen engagement with grassroots organizations, neighborhood leaders, and community partners to co-create initiatives that are responsive, sustainable, and rooted in lived experiences. Thank you for the opportunity, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Monique? No questions, but I would like to compliment you, Monique. I mentioned it at this morning's press conference. This is the first time we had this unified National Night Out effort. It was different for a lot of people, weren't sure how it was going to work out. I spent some time down there looking around. My compliments to you and the staff and every city employee and others who manned those tables out there, because they had a lot of resources for the community and it looked like it was well-received. A lot of people seemed to spend a lot of time at the different tables getting that information, so my compliments, because it was an experiment and looks like it worked out well, and hopefully next year it'll get even bigger. So thank you again. So thank you again.
You're most welcome. Thank you for kind words.
Anyone else for any questions? Councilman Banks?
Yes, just to, just kind of piggyback on what you said, it was probably the most exciting national night out that I've had. I've had an opportunity to visit two or three different ones before I was worn out from the heat, but it was really neat, Monique. You really, and your staff, put your touch on it, if you know what I mean.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Josh?
So the last one we'll be going over tonight is the IT department.
Good evening, Governing Body. So we wanted to just give you a little bit of a highlight on the FY '26 adjustments. As noted in the security audit, they requested that we added an additional security position, so that's been put into this budget proposal. And then adding additional scanning software has also been added. Some of our FY '25 accomplishments is we anticipate the completion of the website and the transition from the old site, complete the upgrade of the utility billing software, and then migrating to a new platform for document retention. The last two have already been completed, so some big projects. And I have to thank the staff for all their time and effort that they've put into those. Without them, we would not have been able to reach those milestones. And then the next slide addresses our geospatial information section of our department. Some of their goals include improving and expanding city asset inventory data, redeploying all existing online mapping applications to the current supported GIS platform. It's in preparation for migration to a .gov domain and enhanced security standards. So each one of those web-based maps that are accessed, they have to be redone, so that they can be moved to the new .gov platform. So a lot of work will go into that. And then some of the accomplishments, vacant lot application provides visibility to departments of all vacant properties within the city. Land bake application allows the public to see owned properties that are for sale. Road closure applications, Waze notifications, provides road closures to navigation routing applications such as Waze and public-facing apps. So with all the construction, we know that's really important this year. Energy dashboard, built out a dashboard, calling out all energy expenditures by type for all the city facility locations. So that's just an example of some of the broad projects that they've been working on. And then lastly, probably our largest project that I know a number of departments have already mentioned in their presentations about how much work it is, but the ERP system that integrates and manages essential business processes, as mentioned, finance, HR, supply chain, streamlining the operations and improving decision-making, will also impact our asset management tracking, as well as our service orders. So it's a phased process effort, and the first portion of the ERP, Josh will be thrilled when it's done, I'm sure, is going to be late this year for the finance section. And then, in the export data from existing systems to be implemented in new systems for enterprise ERP and permitting and licensing modules. So in order to get moved to the new system, we've got to get all the data out of the old systems, and so that's what that second bullet there about next steps is about. And then, we kicked off the HR module, as Alicia mentioned earlier, that that was one of their efforts that they're undertaking this year, and should hopefully be completed by mid-year next year. And then, preparing for kickoff of the asset management module, we're in kind of the pre-work stage with the planning team to try to get that kicked off. And along with that, will be the preparation for the MyCivic portal application, which will eventually replace our C Click Fix app. So I think that's the last slide. So I stand for any additional questions you might have.
Questions for Randy? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Councilman Duncan?
This really isn't a question for you. I guess this is more a general comment and something I'd like us to look at. Had this conversation, we did some of our one-on-ones during budget work sessions. I don't understand why every department budgets for its own IT when much of our IT is still managed out of our one office to some degree. And so I would like us to start looking at how we're budgeting that, as opposed to having every department necessarily have to manage their own licensing and some of those fees as to why it's not done out of the one hub, because I think then we might, first of all, I'm not sure those departments should have to do that to some degree, because that's not their area, but I think we could then find some efforts. So anyway, I'd like us to look at that. I've talked to several departments about that. Some are like, that's doable, sounds like a good idea. Others are like, eh, I don't know about that, Councilman. And so I get both sides of it, and I've talked to departments, but I would really like to start looking at how we're doing that and the way we spread it over, because it's all the same fund. I mean, even though they each have their own departments, it's all coming out of the general fund. So if we could figure out a better way to budget it through IT instead of through individual departments, I'd just like us to have that conversation, and ways we could do that, just make it more efficient for everybody.
Right, definitely open to that, sir. I will point out, though, that it's not all in the general fund, our utilities fund, our parking funds, those are separate operating funds outside of the general fund.
Police and fire and planning and those departments.
Yeah, so on the general fund side, yes. But yeah, we definitely had those conversations.
Yep, thank you. That's all. Just wanted to put that out into the world for consideration as we work through this year and next year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you again.
All right, thank you.
Josh?
So that's all we have for tonight, and I just want to reiterate, we still have a couple more weeks. Our next council meeting, obviously, is going to be an open discussion night, as well as on the ninth. The one key thing about the ninth is that is our public budget hearing. That's just another opportunity for citizens to come and speak on the budget as a whole. They can talk about property tax like they did tonight, but it's a little more open to anything involving the budget. And then, we're hopefully targeting a date for September 16th for adoption approval. So I say all that to say, we still have three weeks, three council meetings to talk about through issues, so that's really all I'll add.
So Josh, over the next few weeks, what we'd be hoping to get from council are questions, thoughts, considerations of any potential amendments. We definitely want to have those discussions as we move forward over the next few weeks.
Councilman?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was out of the room when we did the city manager overview, so I'd like to backtrack a little, again, just to make a comment. It's, again, I understand why. I know it's a budget issue. I know we've also had issues with that hiring in that position. And I also want to be very clear, Josh, this has nothing to do with you. I've said 100 times, I'll continue to say it, you have been a godsend, and you do damn fine work. I am concerned that we are still holding off on the CFO position. And even if that position needs to be changed to the point where it's maybe back to its original versus some changes we suggested, whether that can help us save some money. So I, again, I just want to put that out there. I get why, we've had those conversations, but I am concerned that we're holding off on that, because I do think it's a critical position that we need here in a city our size to fill. So just want, again, one more thing I wanted to put out there as we go through these conversations. Thank you, Mayor.
Do you think you're ready? Thank you, Josh. Okay, Madam Clerk, we're moving to public comment, and I have one name signed up here, Sarah McClure. Did she say she was?
I believe she left.
Okay.
She must be right here.
All right. I'll take your word for it, Jane, and for David. Okay, well, if Sarah's not here, we'll move on now to announcements. Councilman Dobler.
I have zero announcements, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Duncan?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Councilwoman Hofer?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller?
I'll just throw in, the Get Down in T-Town was phenomenal. I had no idea how we had about 1,000 people. I had no idea really how much capacity Red Bud Park in Old Noto has. It was an amazing experience of music and dancing and vendors, food, and just an incredible mix of folks. It was great. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz?
I have nothing.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Banks?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
On the road, thank you, sir. Deputy Mayor Kell?
Just something real quick. Comparing Topeka to Lawrence and Manhattan, to me, does not work. When you look at what happens in those towns, yes, we have a college in our town, but we're not a college town. Kansas State almost has a 50% increase of population during the school year, KU almost a 30%. Topeka has less than 5% increase. Then you go to the events that they have there, 50,000 at Bill Snyder for a football game, David Booth, 40,000, Brambridge, 11,000, Fog Allen, 17,000. You get Lee Arena, 4,000, and Shrine Bowl gets 7,000. So big discrepancies. But also, there's a big cost of living adjustment. Lawrence is almost twice as much as living in Topeka for a house. Manhattan, 150% of what it costs to buy a house here in Topeka. We are very different cities in Lawrence and Topeka. Kansas Avenue is not Mass Street or Aggieville. And people keep on saying, well, let's turn it into Aggieville, let's turn it into Mass Street. First of all, that's happened over decades, that those have turned into those things. So it's not going to happen overnight. But they also have a big influence on the colleges, with the students and with their activities that they have there, that increase the town capacity. A football game doubles the town capacity, plus with all the students that are on campus also. So a lot more people come and go in those cities, and we're just not comparable. So when people want to compare us to Lawrence and Manhattan, to me, it's not fair to Topeka and what we have going on here. There are great comparisons for each other, but not adding nothing to that mix. Thank you.
Councilman Duncan? I know, but I thought I missed past you. Okay, all right. Your name again coming up.
Believe it or not, I had nothing to say, Mayor.
Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I thought about something after earlier when I came in. There are fixed incomes that they don't have a choice. One of the things that made me so excited about coming to work for this council is because I sit with a body of people that put in place property tax rebates. And I thought that was something that was a genius idea for the people who are most vulnerable in our community. And I just want to state that when I brought that to other taxing agencies, the thought of doing that for low-income and fixed-income folks, I was basically laughed at. So they say it was a nonstarter, technically. And bless their hearts that their stuff is in the right place, and that their heart's in the right place, I believe. But if we can't do something for the people who are most vulnerable when our taxes possibly may go up, or whatever the situation is with any taxing agency, I think it's incredibly important to make sure that you see that the city is at least trying to do something for those that are most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. I was a little bit out of sync, too. City Clerk?
Hey, for the September 2nd agenda, we have one board appointment. We will have a presentation on the 2025 National Night Out update. On the consent agenda, we'll have two resolutions from Celtic Fox, one for the noise exception, and the second one's for the Tap That Brew Festival special event. We will have a joint memorandum of agreement for group healthcare, and we will have two professional services contracts. On the action items, we will have three resolutions approving budgets exceeding $250,000 coming out of the PI Committee. We will have an ordinance for Marni Properties LLC for special assessment penalties abatement. And then discussions include utility bill, real estate liens, and then continue discussion on the budget.
Thank you, ma'am. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to recognize a couple folks this evening. One of them, Sean Maisberger, who actually slipped out, as I say, finished the presentation on the human resources budget. Sean is actually retiring after 34 years, and she's basically happy, and she's ready to not work and, you know, probably watch us, you know, moving forward. But I just wanted to recognize Sean for her 34 years of dedicated service to the city of Topeka. And again, I wish she was still here to hear that, but nonetheless, wanted to acknowledge that. Secondly, this will be Amanda's last meeting sitting with us. We're, again, transitioning to an interim. We'll make an announcement later this week, but Amanda, I just wanted to take this opportunity to recognize you for your four years of service at Topeka. I've shared that there's some folks here who basically say you've been the best city manager, or city manager, I'm not promoting you now, city attorney, that we've had. And so yesterday, on the white couch, I acknowledged not only the job that you did, but also the job you did in developing the team, and I have full confidence in the team that you have developed and that will be leading us moving forward. But I wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you.
Dr. Perez, that was a funny joke.
And my last comments, this morning, I brought it up during our press conference. And I think if anybody wants to take the time to look at our press conference, I think I expressed my gratitude for the service that we have received from Amanda in such a way that, like I said, as a longtime resident and employee in the city of Topeka, she has served this community well, and she has done the job of a city attorney. Sometimes people don't understand that she's not particularly our individual attorney, but she is the attorney for the city. And she does everything she can to be as impartial and ethical in everything that she does. I will miss her, not just because of her knowledge, but because she has been a joy to work with. She always has, when we get together, the upside of something. Even when it's been a real bad day, she'll find the upside and go, let's go on and move forward. So I know you'll take that energy to your new position. I envy them, because they'll have the benefit of your character, personality, and professionalism. So again, thank you, Amanda, for everything you've done for the city. Okay, there is no need for an executive session. This meeting is adjourned.